And we will take a moment to observe the moment of silence. All right, I will go ahead and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. The Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic.
To the Republic.
For which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, City Clerk Domingo, can you take a roll call, please?
Sure, Councilmember Clark. Reed. Jackson.
Here.
Lawler.
Here.
Lanu.
Here.
Williamson.
Here.
Snyder.
Here. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda items? Do I have a second?
Support. Support.
Thank you. Roll call, City Clerk Domingo, please.
Councilmember Jackson.
Here.
Lawler.
Here.
Lanu.
Yes.
Williamson.
Yes.
Eric Snyder.
Yes. All right.
So, just as a matter of procedure there, since two councilmembers technically said here rather than yes or no, I think the clerk should probably clarify that so that, because you need four affirmative votes to approve any action.
Here, I mean, um, yes. Sorry.
And Councilwoman Jackson, you also said yes, correct?
Yes.
All right. Public comments, I'm not sure, is Chief Kep running public comments tonight?
He is not, I am doing that.
Okay.
It does not look like anyone has their hands up at this time.
Okay, so at this time, we can go into our discussion of candidates for mayor pro temp. So for those of us that are here, anyone have a motion for a candidate?
As mayor?
Yes.
I'm sorry, I, so per our council rules, the way that this is supposed to work is the council puts forth nominations for the position of mayor pro temp. The nominations do not have to have a second. And then, once the nominations are concluded, the council votes on each nomination in the order that it came up until you have a, at least four votes in favor of one of the nominations.
Okay. So do, yes, Councilwoman Lawler?
Yes, I would like to nominate Councilmember Nora Jackson.
Okay. And from the attorney, we don't need a second motion. Anybody else have a nomination? I would like to nominate Councilman Williamson for this position. Any other nominations? So Colin, I take it we don't need discussion, or do we need discussion before we vote?
You, you can certainly have, well, so here's how this would work. Assuming the nominations are concluded, you, someone would make a motion to, to approve the first nomination, and there would need to be a second, and then there could be discussion on that nomination, followed by a vote. If the vote fails, then you move on to the second nomination. And obviously, if the vote succeeds, you're done.
Okay, so for Councilwoman Jackson, Councilwoman Lawler brought forth the nomination. So we would need a second for that, then, from somebody else?
Technically, since it was a nomination, you need a motion to approve, and then a second.
Okay, so do I have a motion to approve for Councilwoman Jackson?
Colin, can a person say yes for themselves?
It's me.
I gotta, I gotta get used to that mute button. It's been a long day of Zoom hearings. Are you asking whether or not somebody can technically vote on their own nomination?
Yes.
Well, not necessarily, but I think what Councilwoman Lawler was asking, can they, I guess, support that second?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, mayor.
You know, no one's ever asked me that before. I think as a matter of parliamentary procedure, I don't, off the top of my head, I don't know that there's anything that precludes it. I have Robert's Rules here, though, so I'm happy to check while you are having discussion on it.
Okay, so Councilwoman Lawler, since you brought forth the nomination, do you want to kind of speak on why you believe she'd be a good candidate?
Sure, um, I believe that she would be a good candidate. We all are learning, are willing to learn something, and so I think this will be something good for her. She is involved in many things in the community, such as the philanthropic women as far as her job with the, with the children in the community. And she was a store owner in the downtown area, so I know she would know a little bit about business and how finances would go. I would see her schedule as being fit in case there's an emergency for the mayor. She could probably step right on in. And I think that's, that's important, that we get somebody that can really just step right in. Not saying that Councilmember Shane has not done that in previous matters, but, um, yeah, I think she would be pretty good. I know I wouldn't be able to make all those meetings.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
I'm curious about the process and, and what is actually involved in the role. I know that when the mayor's unable to attend a meeting, that's the, the primary place where the mayor pro temp steps up, but I'm just curious what the responsibilities are and, and just like understanding this decision process. Is this something that only happens when we have a new council, or does it happen on an annual basis?
I can probably answer that, Ms. Mayor, if I may.
Sure.
So this, the position of pro temp happens in two circumstances. One, on the two-year election cycle for when the mayor is elected. And it could also hypothetically happen, though it hasn't happened in the 10 years that I've been with the city, if the pro temp were to resign from their position. In terms of responsibilities, it's largely a ceremonial title. It has, the, the pro temp has no responsibilities or authority, except in the event that the mayor is either outside of the city and is required to act, or absent from a meeting and required to act, or unable to act, if they were to fall ill or die, or something of that nature. So the, the pro temp position, you know, basically is a, like I said, a title unless the mayor is unable to act.
Thank you for that.
Yes, thank you.
Councilman Williamson.
So I've been, I actually have enjoyed the role of mayor pro temp the last two years of my term on council, and I was hoping to be nominated to serve in this role again, only because my term actually ends, my term actually ends in, my, sorry, guys, my term actually, my term actually, it's adorable, I promise. My term actually ends at the next mayor, mayor election, and I may or may not be here. I don't know what that looks like, but I thought that, especially since there's so many new council members coming on board this, this round, it would be a great opportunity for whoever wanted to step into that role and then eventually step into the mayor's role at some point. It's almost like a pipeline of leadership in the community, although voters always have the last say on those things. But I thought that that would be a good way to do it. I am, of course, open to whatever council decides tonight, and there will be no hard feelings if I'm no longer the mayor pro temp. I guess I'm no longer that as of Monday night, anyway. Chief Kip made sure to change that title quick. But, um, but I have, I have enjoyed it. We, we have the last two years used the mayor pro temp role to appoint certain, like responsibilities, like managing the situation with the city manager, leading the front on appointing the assistant city manager, and then developing a process moving forward to hire our next city manager. And that's something that I have done and have enjoyed doing, and we, I feel like we had had some really good working moments, both Councilwoman Lawler and Councilwoman Clark have worked with me on both of those things. And so that was, that was really my main argument for wanting to be in this role still. But again, it's up to council, and I will gladly serve or gladly step aside of that role, so thanks.
So Colin, do we look for a vote on Nora's nomination before we go into speaking about Shane?
Correct, you would have to, you would vote on Councilwoman Jackson's nomination. You would need four votes in the affirmative. If that doesn't happen, then you would move to Councilwoman Williamson's nomination.
Okay, and so to, to keep this by the books, then, do we need to have a second for this motion?
You would need a second for the motion, and technically, you should have had that second before we had discussion. But I have not been able to find anything that would indicate that, that Councilwoman Jackson couldn't second the motion herself.
Councilwoman Lawler?
Um, is, is it possible to offer Councilmember Jackson a point, a time to say what she feels about the nomination and if she feels that she can do it?
Yeah, I mean, we're still, we're still on the discussion of her, yeah.
And I guess just as a point of order, there technically should be a second on the motion before you continue discussion. Sorry.
Support.
Okay, since we have Councilwoman Lanu's support on this, correct? Did I hear that right?
Yes.
Okay, um, you know, Councilwoman Jackson, do you want to put in some words as well?
Yes, I can do some elaboration on this. So just, even just wanting to be the mayor pro temp, it's kind of been my background for quite some years now. And not being the mayor, but just being an assistant or being a manager, and I've been doing this for like over 25 years, not just in the school system, but also into the factories, into businesses, restaurants, and also to even say that my dad even gave that role to me when I was a younger child to run the grocery store. So I've been doing a lot of leadership, I've been doing a lot of coordinating, because my businesses that I've had have not just been the restaurant, per se. I'm a coordinator, I'm a wedding designer, so the role of just stepping in to be able to help you, that I can do. So, and I do understand what Shane is saying too, which is good too, to be able to train someone in the areas that, you know, what he has done also. But yes, the responsibility is, is basically what I do do and some of what I have been trained at B.C. Vision in Battle Creek before I even came back to Albion to serve for you guys. So over at Battle Creek Community Foundation, I was part of the community engagement there. And so I was there with them for many months, working with the Burmese family, you know, African American, the Latinos, and we went on and on. So we've been, I've been doing this quite, this type of work for quite some time. And then also with the engagement with the churches, I've have been, I have been a youth director for quite some, many years. It just, it didn't just start now. So, but there's, it's still, there's always room for training, to learn even more, and I'm also willing to do that. And I'm like Shane, so it's something that I would love to do, love to see some different changes and some other, more of us coming together. And I just believe I do have that, to be able to bring the town together, to do some things different, and to be able to basically get more information out in different areas that we have not been able to do. So that's just one or two of the things that I would love to be able to do.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yes, Councilwoman Lanu?
Thank you, mayor. I recognize, so it was interesting to me having this meeting and then Mrs. Reed not being able to be here, because I'm the, the second other, you know, incoming council member who could possibly be up for this. So I feel, you know, very, I feel the weight of this decision, even though I recognize it as a ceremonial role. I'm glad with the two choices that we have here tonight and the, the option to hear from both of them. And, and I thought it was kind of like a more blind process, so this is like much easier in terms of being able to see the options and hear from, hear from both. I think both of you would make great mayor pro temp. My biggest concern right now is capacity. I know that, like, as a city, our capacity is strapped, and, and each one of us is going to have to stretch ourselves just in, in our current roles. So that's the, one of the biggest factors that I'm thinking. But again, I think both of you would make great mayor pro temp. And so I, I appreciate having two good options and both of you wanting to step up for even more leadership.
So Colin, correct me if I'm wrong, at this time, do we take a vote?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, City Clerk Domingo, do you want to do the roll on this?
Sure, Councilmember Jackson?
Point of information, point of information, if you're voting yes, you're voting for Nora. If you're voting no, you're voting to go to a different option. So it's not, it's not a, it's not a Councilmember Jackson or a Councilmember Williamson, it's just yes for Councilmember Jackson or no for Councilmember Jackson.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Lawler?
You're muted, I think, yeah.
Yes.
Lanu?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
And Mayor Snyder?
No.
So with that, since it was a, you, well, I won't say unanimous, but majority vote, do we even, or do I even bring up my points about why I wanted or nominate Shane for the position?
No, since the mayor pro temp has been selected by four votes, Councilwoman Jackson will, is selected. And so the remaining nominations are moot. I'll prepare a resolution for the next council meeting.
Awesome, all right, thank you. All right, so since we are done with that, yes, ma'am?
I do want, I do want to hear, um, I do want to hear you, though, because Shane is good. I ain't, I can't lie about it, I gotta give him his credit. He is good, and he'll get in there and get on somebody if they get out of line. But, um, I just want to know, I just want to know how you feel about it, I mean, you know.
Well, I can do my, my comments when we get to our mayor and council member comments, so.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll save them for there.
Yes.
So since we're done with that, do we open it up for public comments again? City Manager Snyder?
Would we go to future agenda items for, since it is a special, it's an actual meeting. So yes, if you have any future agenda items, you would adjust those at this time.
I apologize, I just thought that was future agenda items for additional special meetings.
Nope, this is just a special council meeting, so you have, you can put forth future agenda items for the next regular council meeting.
Okay. Any council members have, Councilwoman Lanu?
Thank you. I have a question, I don't know if it's a future agenda item. Counselor Reed mentioned Haley being from interim to the actual city manager, and I was curious what the protocol is and if we can discuss that, or, or just how we move forward so that the city can continue to make the decisions that it needs to.
So City Manager Snyder, do we put that as an agenda item? I know it was before, before we kind of changed.
Yes, ultimately, council would need to either add it to the agenda and have a discussion and take action on whether, what you would like to do with the city manager position.
Okay, great. Thank you, Councilwoman Lanu?
Thank you.
Any other items to add to the next agenda? Councilwoman Lawler? You're on mute, Nicola.
I think she's trying to figure out how to.
Oh, technology.
If you're on a laptop, if you hit the spacebar, it'll take you off. You just have to hold the spacebar down and you can speak.
She's probably on her phone, that's the hardest.
Okay, I'm sorry, I, I, I don't have, I'm not smart, it's the smartphone. Miss Reed, Councilmember Reed had a lot of things that I saw she wanted on the agenda. Will we be talking about that tonight? Okay, thank you.
Any other items? Okay. Public comments, City Manager Snyder, anybody out there?
Yes, it looks like we do have a few.
All right, folks, so let's just keep in mind that, state your name, your address, and then we're gonna limit you to three minutes.
Okay, Garrett Brown, 1016 South Spear. Congratulations to all the council members, and thank you all for solving that issue and not taking it down to the wire on, on, on Monday. And then also, just I wanted to thank Councilmember Williamson for the magnanimity there. One of the things Councilmember Lanu mentioned about the hiring thing, yeah, I'll wait and see what council decides about that, but I, I do want to just reiterate that whatever process you do, please let it be, you know, an open process and let it be publicly posted, because that was one of the issues in the past that, when I, when I was on council, we had was the, you know, the, the access of candidates and applicants to be able to apply to jobs and making sure that we're, we're doing that. So whatever that process looks like, I just encourage council to, to allow for that. And then, I guess, the second thing I would say, I, I know there was a couple of years ago, there was a lady who was former here, maybe Birmingham, but her name was Coco Seaworth, and she's a facilitator with MML and does a lot of parliamentary procedure training. And she actually, if you look at the, at the back of the council rules, the, the little chart there with the table of motions and those kinds of things, she gave that to the council, and so that's why that, that was included in the, the council rules. And she would actually do a really great job of helping those who might need some training on that. So just that request and that suggestion, and hope you all have a great night, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brown, appreciate it. Do we have anybody else out there?
Yes, Commissioner Gary Tompkins.
Good evening, Commissioner Tompkins.
Hey, good evening, everybody. Gary Tompkins, your county commissioner. I first of all want to state that I apologize for not being able to join you on Monday night. I had my son and daughter that were up, and I got carried away talking with them, and before I knew it, the, the time had elapsed. So I do apologize for not joining you, folks, certainly on Monday. I, I'll be real brief tonight, I just want to take the opportunity to congratulate Mayor Snyder, Councilmember Jackson, and Councilmember Lanu on your elections. I haven't officially had a chance to say that, so certainly looking forward to working with each one of you going forward, and also to congratulate Councilmember Clark and Councilmember Lawler there as well on your reelection. So just wanted to state that I'm looking forward to working with each and every one of you and doing great things as your commissioner for the city of Albion. So going forward, look forward to doing that. So with that being said, I just wanted to state that, and each one of you have a great evening, all right? Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Thank you, we appreciate that as well.
And that's all for public comment.
Awesome, okay. City Manager report, do you have anything for us?
I do not have anything at this time.
Okay, and so now we're into the mayor and council member comments. And so Councilwoman Reed did send in a statement that she wanted me to read on her behalf since she wasn't able to be here with us tonight. She says, "Good evening to all of you. I'm not available for this meeting, and was hoping Saturday morning would have been the choice, but what I would like to see come out of this meeting is thoughts on how we can make this a positive, productive, and let us move Albion forward here. I know people get on boards hoping to make a change for the better, I did. I would like to see in this board transparency, inclusion of all. By that, I mean, forget the clicks, let us all get busy working on solving the problems, sharing ideas on what will help the city benefit, not just our precinct. Help where and when you can. I asked before, and I'm asking again, I would like for us to take a van and tour Albion. We need to take a good look at things that need to be improved to make our city look better. There are parts of Albion that really need cleaning up. If we do it now, when there are no bushes or leaves on trees, we can better see the problems that can be worked on in the spring. If the snow comes soon, then we should make plans for an early spring tour. We need a city cleanup date set now for early summer and plan to help senior citizens get their disposables to the pickup area. It is also time to get our city administration in order. We need to get Ms. Haley Snyder's position as city manager approved so that she can hire an assistant that can write grants and help fund things needed for the city and assist her so that she has time to do the job that has been lacking since city manager Cheryl Mitchell left. I am looking forward to working with all of you. If I can assist you in any way, please feel free to contact me." So those were her comments that she wanted to share. And so I'm not sure if maybe we want to put this on as an agenda item for her motion or thoughts to do a city tour, to look at areas in the city that could use improvement. I don't think it would be possible to get us all into a van since, you know, we're not allowed to gather together. But we may have some way for us to be able to at least point out some areas. Like, I know Councilwoman Lawler, you have concerns on your precinct. And so I'm sure other also have that, so maybe we can make a list and we all dedicate some time to at least get in our own vehicles, take a look, take notes, and then bring that back to see what we can do as a solution. So we can definitely put that on as an agenda item. Sound good? In regards to me, thank you, Councilwoman Lawler, for wanting to hear my, my thoughts. You know, when I was thinking about the candidate for mayor pro temp, I wanted to provide Shane that opportunity again, just because in the past few weeks, when it's, when I've had questions. when I've had questions and I didn't wanna bother City Manager Snyder, I would go to Shane and Shane always had an answer for me in regards to how the process and procedures work with our city management. As well, he already has a working relationship with the city manager and city clerk, so he could step in and run meetings. Since the election, Shane has been running the meetings. He's been working with City Manager Snyder to set the agendas to, you know, fill in when Dave had been absent so that, you know, we could still process and get things moving forward. He also has working relationships with current board and committee members that also serve our town. So, you know, just like we had said before, if for some reason I couldn't be here, that person's gonna have to step in and still move forward, know what's going on and keep things progressing. So heaven forbid I don't die or become ill or I'm incapacitated, but you know, there are probably gonna be times where I'm gonna be out. And so if something needs to be done, you know, we just wanted to make sure somebody can handle that task. But I don't have any problems with Councilwoman Jackson taking on this position. You know, I know she's dedicated. I know she has great work ethic, has a personality where she can work with anybody and anybody. So I have no hesitation there too. So those were just my comments. Yes.
That was good. That's, that's, that's the truth. It's the truth. Shane, you're the man.
Yes, Councilwoman Williamson.
So congratulations, Councilmember Jackson, for becoming the mayor pro tem. I will continue to be a resource to anyone on council. I, I do come to council with a, with a certain skill set and certain things I do. I'm a business owner. I work with many nonprofits across the state, including some statewide nonprofits around education. So I, I have, I do have a breadth of knowledge and experience to help anywhere I can. So I will continue to be helpful. I, I will say selfishly, I would really like to be involved in whatever process we move forward with when we replace the city manager. I, I feel like I have had a unique opportunity to lead what we've done since the last city manager situation. I have led that every step of the way. And so I'm hoping that I will still be allowed to serve in a similar capacity moving forward when we, when we move that process forward. So I would really appreciate that opportunity. And again, I will be a resource to everyone on council, including Councilmember Jackson, Mayor Pro Tem Jackson. Moving forward. So again, I am committed to making sure that this council looks completely different than councils before it. And this is one of the ways that we do that. So it would have been very easy for me to vote no. And we moved back into a stalemate and someone would have to give up something and we could have a dogfight in front of the community. But this is, this is much better. This is a better way of serving the citizens. And I intend to continue to partner with all of you to do that. So again, congratulations, Mayor Pro Tem Jackson.
Thank you, Shane.
He's so sweet.
Yes, he is. Yes, he is.
Councilwoman Lanu?
Thank you, Mayor. Congratulations, Mayor Pro Tem Jackson. I just want to acknowledge you, Shane, that everything that you just shared and your willingness to continually help and everything that you've done to really make sure the city is moving forward at such a time of immense transition really is to be commended. So I, I do wanna thank you and also just acknowledging that you, you didn't have to vote yes and, and yet you want to move us forward judiciously. That really says a lot. So I, I just wanna thank you. I, I said what I did early on just to acknowledge that this is all, you know, I can feel the weight of it. And I know that the order of the, the, the votes also makes a big difference in the, the way this process works. So I'm just glad to see everything moving forwards swiftly and I appreciate everybody's commitment to working together.
Thank you. All right, any other comments? All right, do we have a motion to excuse Councilwoman Reed and Councilwoman Clark?
Moved.
Support.
Support.
All right, City Manager or City Clerk Domingo, do you want to take a roll call on that?
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Lawler?
Yes.
Lanu?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
And Mayor Snyder?
Yes. All right, folks, I think we're good. So I will adjourn this meeting at 6:40 PM.
Have a good night.
Good night, everybody.
Evening. Need a motion or are we good to?
You're supposed to motion and second to adjourn the meeting.
Oh, no, and Shane's already gone. All right, so.
Now that you, but yeah, fortunately, since now you're at a subquorum or charter allows a subquorum to adjourn the meeting, so.
All right, um, do I have a motion to adjourn? And Councilwoman Jackson, you support?
Support.
Awesome. All right, anything else?
Usually you just do the, yeah.
Sorry. Domingo?
Uh, Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Lawler?
Yes.
And Mayor Snyder?
Yes. All right, thank you all.